Can you please rise for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of quick public announcements. Upcoming meetings for the balance of the year will be September 22nd, October 22nd, November 10th, December 8th at 5:00 PM. There's an opening on the Board of Health that you'll see the website will give you all the information. Local artist Ron Brake will be here on October 27th to donate a beautiful painting that he did of the North Abington Depot. So I wanted to let everybody know that. Election Day is November 15th for the vacant seat on the board, our select board. Hours on Election Day are 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The deadline for nomination papers is 9:29. And last but not least, the 9/11 ceremony which we started last year, Kevin Donovan spearheaded, is this Thursday, 9/11, at 8:30 sharp at Town Hall. And I'd like to thank Richard Pearce who donated the mulch. If you see the flagpole area, it's absolutely beautiful. And Smithers Landscaping did the work for nothing donating their time to get everything ready for the ceremony. Anybody on the board have anything else?
No.
First on the agenda, I would like to bring up the Police Chief for an update.
Thank you for having us and very much looking forward to that October 22nd meeting because hopefully that meeting will be introducing you to seven new recruits at that meeting. But as it stands now, I want you to keep in mind the number 32 because since I started, we have been 32% behind in our minimum staffing that we've been budgeted for. When I first met, when I had my first meeting with the Finance Committee, I promised them that I'd never ask for bodies that we couldn't fill. And they gave me the history of us having a hard time filling vacancies and we have been able to do that. And our academy recruits have been working really hard. And October 10th is Academy Graduation Day. So hopefully on the 22nd, we can, we can bring them all in in the blue uniforms. But that number 32% being behind is kind of an absurd number. If you, if you look at it in terms of other walks of life. So, you know, if you are, if you're building and all of a sudden the lumber companies tell you that the average two by four won't be eight percent, eight feet, and they reduce the size by 32%, I would imagine it would be very difficult to be building homes. If you told a classroom teacher, my wife teaches third grade, if you told her she'd have the same amount of students but 32% less desks, that would be just simply absurd. And if you were bringing a pizza home to your hungry family, full pizza wouldn't do. You'd have to feed your family with 32% less. And obviously, these are just like little anecdotal figures. But running a police agency with 32% less bodies than were allotted for has been monumentally difficult. But our crew has definitely risen to the challenge. And if you look at what we've done in the last year, we've been able to hire 10 patrol officers and one of those is on a grant that the federal government pays for. Thanks to the hard work of people that came here before me, secured funding for a gym and members of the Police Department built it. Just a fabulous gym that's going to go a long way for the wellness of our, of our officers. Our technology upgrade, our tasers were basically 20 years old and we upgraded those tasers thanks to the generosity of the taxpayers giving us the funds for that. We have Axon VR headsets through a grant that Lieutenant Simmons and Sergeant Feeley worked hard on getting. So that, those cost no money to the town but is giving us a, a training tool that almost no agency is lucky to have. We just installed flock cameras that will read license plates instantly off a state hot list and will tell us what stolen cars are coming through town instantly. And we've had a lot of them. As far as community outreach, again, keep in mind, we're still 32% behind. We're not just patrolling the areas but we're doing things at the senior center. We had a robust Toys for Tots, the deputy and the fire chief are working on another ride with Santa. We did Read Across America and we hosted an unbelievable retiree luncheon for former Abington Police Officers. And we're working hard to get us re-accredited. The year ahead, we're going to have a Neighborhood Watch. We have our first meeting coming up. We're working on our, with, with the state legislators to give us some money to, to build a wellness and recovery room. With the graduates of the academy, we plan to increase our detective unit. Beginning of the year, we'll have body cameras on our chest. And with all of the police officers on the road finishing up field training, we'll be able to go back to in-service in person. We plan on attending the Use of Force Conference where the latest use of force techniques are taught by the greatest use of force teachers around the country. And so it's, we're working also with the schools and the Fire Department, multi-agency training to do active killer training. So that's the year ahead. Our current staffing, like I said, we're funded for 19. We actually have 13 patrol officers, which is 11 patrol officers for the street and two for the school. We have seven academy recruits. We do have eight sergeants. One is in Poland with the Army. So we're down there as well. Our support staff includes three part-time desk attendants. We're trying to hire two full-time. We have a part-time firearms licensing clerk, a one part-time court prosecutor, one top part-time property officer, a full-time records clerk and a full-time executive assistant who does a little bit of everything in the world. Just a quick note on the part-time firearms licensing clerk, the part-time court prosecutor and the part-time property officer, even our record, public records clerk. When we're talking about staffing, if we lose any one of these part-time civilian positions, we have to fill those positions. We have to, people have a right to carry a firearm. We have to have somebody dedicated to firearms licensing. We have to have someone dedicated to public records so we can't lose any civilian staff because then we will then have to backfill it with police officers, taking police officers off the street. So we are running as completely lean as we possibly can. We cannot suffer any more cuts. This is what it looks like right now for staffing. All those purple rectangles are open shifts. That means we do not have a police officer assigned, enough police officers assigned here. Now, a couple weeks ago, these shifts were wide open because we had two members of our agency out on long-term FMLA for the birth of their, of a baby. Before that, we had two sergeants that were out injured. So when we're running as lean as we are, these overtime numbers skyrocket. Our overtime costs last year, we were allocated for $140,000. We used $466,000 because we have to fill positions. We're not filling positions to do fun stuff. We're filling positions to keep people on the street. Now, keep in mind, I said we have 11 patrol officers for the street. That means to fill the overtime, I cannot rely on 11 patrol officers to fill all of those overtimes. We would lose them. So we have to allow support sergeants to, and lieutenants to fill patrol overtime shifts because we simply have too many shifts to run. This year, our overtime budget has improved slightly because we made a modification. We're not allowing everybody to take vacation time. So we made an unbelievable agreement with the union that one person has to be staffed and then another person can take a day off. But when we get the seven people out of the academy, we go to here and all of those open shifts simply disappear. They're gone. And if you look at, say, Thursday and Friday, you're going to see that those are relief days, right? So look at just that day shift there. We're going to go from having like two patrol officers on the road to Fitz, Walsh, Resendez, Principi, Paraxlas, Mello, and then two sergeants and a desk attendant just by having those seven people on the road. So this is going to allow us to mark people off for training, take vacation time, and craft units. And one person will go to detectives, not out of our graduating class, but one person will go to detectives. Simply funding us to our minimum staffing, I promise you right now, I'm not going to ask for our wants but I will beg for our needs. And this is our need to give us our minimum staffing going forward. It solves many of the overtime problems. It allows us to go to training, which we've had to reel back. We've had, we, we're making our officers do training online. And the reality of our jobs lately have been very, very dangerous. We've shared the numbers. Our firearms recoveries are through the roof. Three firearms covered in the last, recovered in the last year that were used in a commission of the crime. We recovered a previously stolen firearm recently. We, 34 people with licenses to carry improperly stored their firearms. We recovered those. And the 55 held for safekeeping impound for restraining orders, those, that's, that's some of the most dangerous thing, things we can do. So when you have a restraining order filed against you and you lose your license to carry, we have to go into that home and recover those firearms. So you have someone pretty angry at that time, not wanting to lose their firearms. They're going through the court process and they have to show us where their firearms and we have to recover those. That is an astronomical amount of firearms recovered. We've gone over August by the numbers. We've, we've started poaching these a year ago. That year-to-date has now topped over 500 arrests year-to-date. That's about a 12% increase overall from this time last year. So we're 32% down and we're increasing 10% in arrest numbers. And to give you an idea of how big that number is, this is a town of about 17,000 people. The town of Stoughton that I previously worked in, town of about 30,000 people, has doubled the police force, doubled the patrol force. They, the last check, they were at about 480 arrests. So we're doing more, more arrests than a town that has, you know, more people, more roads, more things going on. And our 11 patrol officers and seven sergeants are absolutely crushing it. The, what I want to play for you right now is a little bit of snippet just to give you an inside scoop of what it is like to be one of our police officers. This happened about a week ago and I'm just going to let this play out. And this is a pursuit. I do want to say, we do have a policy against pursuits. That, we don't just pursue anybody who won't stop for us. We have policies and I'm not going to publicly state what they are because I don't want people to know what that policy is. But we can't just pursue for ticky tack fouls. All of these pursuits that we've talked about in the last couple of weeks have been for big, major events. And I'd just like to play this for you right now.
Control to 298, 293. Got a call from the residence of 14 Kingswood Drive. She states that there's been some vehicles that have been possibly doing some drug deals in the past couple of days. She states they're there right now. She's, since left, it's going to be four Yankee Alpha Charlie 57, one Victor Mike Papa 91. She states that they pull up to each other, they do what they need to do and then they, they get moving. She just wanted to pass it along since it's been going on so often.
Okay.
Yankee Alpha Charlie 57. It's going to be a black Mercedes to a resident out of P.O. Box in Randolph. She does have an active LTC along with one on the Bob. Standby for the two.
I'll yell at Mercedes.
Roger.
The running vehicle, uh, taking off at note Kingswood. Two male parties. They're turning east on 139. They almost struck me. Chestnut Street headed west. They're about to cross here, Clark. Notify Brockton. They're continuing on Chestnut Street West towards North Quincy.
Brice, Holbrook on the side as well.
Just be advised, I saw the operator in the passenger. Both looked down in between them before they took off. Again, I was getting out of my car and they drove at me.
Brice, if I have it.
Uh, speed's approximately 85 miles an hour. Beating traffic.
281 Sergeant Gill, if they almost hit you, you can keep going.
That's affirmative. They're going on North Quincy Street towards Holbrook. Uh, they just turned down Brookville, Brookville Ave. They just took a right. They're headed towards, I don't know the road, but that four-way intersection in Holbrook. At that intersection of the CPS, they just took a left onto 37. Uh, it's going to be 37 south towards Brockton. Currently, no visual. I'm just entering in Brockton. Uh, got no visual. Last seen going 37 south in Holbrook towards Brockton. I'm picking them back up. They're Brockton at the, uh, head start, passing the ADC. They're going south on 37, overtaking traffic. They're coming up to the lights, passing Bridgeway Liquors. They took a left onto, stand by. I don't know the street, but 37 south, took a hard left, Bridgeway Liquors, passing Therapeutic Matress, going through this industrial park, Astral International is on my right. At the end of the road, they just took a left at that stop sign, Spark Street Autobody, and passing Intervale Street. Eight, six, four, I don't have them anymore.
Roger. We were given live updates throughout that whole situation with Brockton PD. So they, uh, they're very well aware.
Control, if you could assign me an O.
Roger.
It was good. Go to Saks. Good job.
Roger.
So that's Sergeant Gillen, an absolute pro to handle something like that. The entire time he was by himself through Holbrook, through Brockton, he was by himself the whole time. Like I said, that LTC is a license to carry. He saw the two people in the car looking at the center console and he went into a very dangerous area in Intervale in Arthur Street in Brockton. We tried to find that person in Brockton. Brockton PD helped us once we were there and, and we are still continuing to investigate. But we don't have enough people on the street to handle that. He's all by himself. And you take, for instance, last night, with last night's chaos, one officer was taken out, had to go, he was hit by a car trying to track down the man we arrested last night. And now-
Chief, can you explain what happened last night so the-
Certainly. So last night, we got three 911 calls. The three 911 calls, I've listened to the three calls. They were all detailing how this white pickup truck was driving at people, driving on the wrong side of the road. One person said that he saw, he hit someone and took off. So he was reporting a hit and run. We later learned that another community had put out a BOLO, which means be on the lookout for this particular truck, and he took off. And so when the officer first engaged him, they were going through the intersection and somebody hit the rear of the officer, causing the officer to then hit someone else and take off. Officer Sayers finally, and at one point, because of the nature of this, the sergeant did in fact terminate the pursuit. But that is when Officer Sayers saw the person spin out on North Ave over by Martins and take off running. So Officer Sayers, in his second foot pursuit in a week, captured the suspect and when he was backtracking, learned that the suspect had ditched a gun. So we froze that scene. BCI came out from Plymouth County and it was revealed that that gun was in fact a pellet gun. So that gentleman was not going to stop for anybody. The, our team likely, very, very likely saved someone's life last night. And I am infinitely proud of the work that they did last night. And I know it caused a lot of chaos and a lot of concern. We tried to get out in front of it as, as much as we could, but it was important for us to get factual information in this sort of rapidly deteriorating situation where we had to get it right. So there was a lot of, of talk online about what happened and the officer hit someone and, you know, we, we got the information out to the public and it was a very dangerous situation. No one is seriously hurt. And again, I just, I, I can't believe the volume of dangerous work that our team puts in all the time. And this isn't just this, you know, Officer Sayers had another pursuit on Friday night that went into Brockton. And it was revealed with the person that we arrested that night. We got, the deputy noticed a notification from the Boston Regional Intelligence Center that came out that these two are in fact stealing cars all over the place. So these two that were charged with the crimes from Officer Sayers in the stolen car. So hopefully, we're going to put a real impact on the stolen cars that have happened around town. So it's just, it's, it's an unbelievable amount of work.
Can, can I just interrupt you there for one second if you don't mind, before you go on?
Sorry.
In light of what happened last night and certainly from the fact of Officer Sayers the other day too, what I'd like to do now is make a motion that the board offer our, extend our thanks and issue a commendation to the officers and have whoever was involved, all of them that were involved in these pursuit, have them up to the next meeting-
I agree.
-to formally do that. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I think one, again, I don't mean to cut you, but I, I think people need to hear what you're saying. We know from being in the position we sit, we've had some dangerous people that you, that our police force has apprehended just in the last, less than two weeks. And I think people need to understand what's going on in town. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I want people to know, the guys you waved to that are out there in, in the, in the cruises aren't just driving around like they were able to do 30 years ago.
Right.
There's, there's some bad things going on in town and these guys are keeping the streets safe. And we need to get these guys through the academy. So-
Losing, losing any of them. And, and like I said, during these times, I, like, when things are better, I'll ask for our wants. We have to get our needs. And our needs is to keep every person in our building, including our support staff. Because, you know, we can't lose the support staff and, and fill it with a police officer. And tomorrow, when I walk through the door, excuse me, when I walk through the door, it's my one-year anniversary and I couldn't be more proud of this group that's here on the screen. And I thank you for my time.
So one more thing if I could. Sorry, Kevin. Can you again say, so everybody understands, how many calls you had? Can you go over the August numbers again?
Sure.
Because I, I think what happens is we, we all tend to breeze through things and I want people to understand what's going on in town. I'm not trying to scare them, but I want them to know, we have issues that you guys are fighting on a daily and nightly basis in town.
Yep.
So please, please-
So our traffic crashes are extraordinarily high in August and our arrests are extraordinarily high. So it's 71 and 72 arrests. Now, when we have an arrest that takes two officers off the road for a significant period of time, because it's not just cuff them, stuff them, get back in the road. There's a ton of documentation that goes along with it, preparing the reports for court, writing the reports, arranging for bail. It's, it's, takes well over an hour to get all of that done. We've had, we had about 4,700 calls for service. Those are true, true calls for service throughout the year. 662 just last month.
So let me, again, so you had 662 calls to the Police Department in the month of August?
Yes. Three weeks ago, we had 158 just in the weekend, including seven physical arrests. The weekends have been very, very busy for us. And then, the, the biggest complaint I get from the public, which it makes me happy because I know our public feels safe in this town. They, I engage with the public at the senior center, are out on the, on the street. I go to dunks a lot. And they do feel safe in this town. And the major complaint is traffic. And while we're answering the 662 calls and, you know, doing the 100 and, I mean, the, the 71 arrests, we responded to 72 traffic crashes, but we, we wrote 102 citations with 204 traffic stops. That is a remarkable number for two patrol officers on the road and a sergeant.
So you're averaging 17 arrests a week roughly?
Yes.
Can you, can you, just so I understand, can you go back to the overtime?
Yes.
Just because, I just want to make sure I understand it. So right now, for fiscal year '26, you were appropriated 188,000, uh, excuse me, 180,000. For July and August, because I'm assuming that's, these figures are up till August?
No.
These are, so this is current as of right now. So if you were to look on the towns' spreadsheets, those, the fiscal year '26 bounds minus two weeks since our pay period is two weeks behind. So this is as of the pay I submitted last week, we're weekending August 30.
Okay. So the point being is that for the first two months of the fiscal year, you've utilized 50% of the overtime budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Am I then to understand that when these new offices come on, that that will be, come back into check?
No, not until January. So when they come out of the academy, they are not road-ready. They ride with another patrol officer. And there's an increase to the, to the, to the salary of the field trainer as well per contract. So the salary, the field trainer gets a bump in pay and then the seven on the road aren't ready to impact our overtime numbers until they release from field training around January.
Okay. So extrapol-
But then we would see a massive reset.
Okay. So extrapolating it out then, for the balance of the fiscal year, based on the new people coming on, do you feel that that will average it up itself out then? So you're, you're front-ending the overtime right now, but it'll, it'll wean itself off?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board have anything for the chief?
I think you and your officers are doing a fantastic job for the town of Abington.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I just want to say to you and Deputy Chief Postel and to all your officers who, since I've been back on the board, I've gotten to know them, that I want the people to understand what you guys do, which is why we want to start doing this on a monthly basis. Again, I'm not trying to sound the alarm, but people need to know what's going on in town. And I think we get complacent as residents because you guys do such a good job. But I think they need to know that just two incidents in the last week and a half were guns involved in our town that we're not used to having. But you guys being proactive, appointing, you know, having the, the seven people in the academy, I think people need to understand how important pushing forward as we have been trying to do at the Police Department is. So again, to you and Deputy Chief Postel and all of you men, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And plus, and plus the fact, as I, when we interviewed you, I said, there are rarely two Abintons. There's the Abington that, you know, people would like it to be. And then there's the Abington that you're experiencing now. And, you know, whether people like it or not, it's not a sleepy little town.
Right. A great majority of the violent people that we have coming, it's coming into town. We would like to let those people know that we're not going to stand for it. And that's what they've done so far.
Well, thank, thank the, uh-
Thank you.
Thank the staff.
Thank you.
The Fire Chief?
Thank you very much. First, I wanted to start off with kind of doubling down on what everybody here has said with the Police Department. I'm entering my 30th year with the Abington Fire Department and I've never seen the two departments work better together than they are now. The management of the chief and the deputy, the officers involved, they're phenomenal. And even though I don't work side by side with them on each call, it doesn't mean I don't hold my breath and, and breathe a little tougher every time I hear them on the radio in a chase. Last night, I responded to the scene because we had multiple calls going on there as well. I'll get into that a little bit. But I just really just want to comment, I'm so proud to work next to these guys. We, we joke a lot, but it's because I have the utmost respect for them and so do the members of our department. And we're continuing to work forward with them. So kudos to you guys. Mine, my presentation won't be as fantastic as the chief's as far as the PowerPoint, but I can obviously follow up with a transcript for you if anybody has any questions. So I'm going to start off with the good of the department on things that have been going well. It's good and bad, but it's good that our ambulance revenues are at a pace where it's exceeding last year. It's bad, but it's good if you understand what I'm saying. We run two ambulances and I'll get into that a little bit more. So the ambulance revenues are coming in. The second thing I want to point out is Alexis Chavaroli, our administrative assistant. Every year, she does a Medicare reimbursement, but basically it's a questionnaire. Some of the towns don't even do them. And it's the craziest thing to me. I don't understand it. But it's, it's, it's basically a 20-page online survey where they, they ask for, you know, how many people, approximately how many hours responded to this, whatever. Long story short, it's a two-week tedious task. Originally, when I started doing it with her and, and it was probably about a four-week task, she's narrowed it down. She can do it in two weeks. We're averaging getting $150,000 returned to the general fund because of her efforts and because of what they're doing. So I wanted to make sure I made that clear. Our staffing, our staffing's at full staff and that's six members per shift. This is staffing that we were able to get back to 11 years ago through a safer grant, through a FEMA grant. And we were able to maintain it. And the way we did that is by putting the second ambulance in service. If we have to drop below that sixth member- If we have to drop below that sixth member, we can't run the second ambulance. So, it goes together. Last year, our revenues was $1.4 million we brought in for the town through ambulance revenues, and gave them, in my opinion, the best advanced life support system in Plymouth County. This year, again, we're at full staff right now, just to give you a ballpark on what we were doing. So, we have four shifts, six members per shift. Every one of them's advanced life support, every one of them's trained as a paramedic. You may have some departments that are close to that, but I don't believe you have any in the area that actually 100% in that area. We do that, and as the police do as well, we do more with less. We're cross-trained, we give you everything you're going to need as a firefighter, but we can switch over immediately and go to paramedic mode. Not to compare us, but with the Fall River incident that they had, it really came to light that the, you know, the national standard for a fire vehicle is four members. By getting that grant 11 years ago, we're up to, we can actually send two members out per truck. Wants, needs, it's a different ballgame right now, we understand that, you know, where the town is. But we, we exceeded 4,500 responses last year with six members per shift. In the mid-1970s, they had 1,100 responses per shift with six members. So, that kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. What we're relying on quite a bit is striking, what we call striking a box for off-duty help. Not everybody's available off-duty, but we hope for it. So, we strike a box for multiple calls, and what that means is both ambulances are tied up, and they're being used. Sometimes, like, we transport someone, that's 45 minutes to an hour at the hospital, minimal. Some hospitals are so busy, we may be there an hour and 15 minutes, and we try to free them as much as we can. So, then the next ambulance goes out. We hope for off-duty help to fill in, because that means our stations are empty, and we're hoping for the guys to be able to come back, and they do, to help us out. But what we're noticing over the last couple of years is, we're averaging probably one to two times per day minimum, where both ambulances are in service, and we're hoping for off-duty help. And what that means for the taxpayers is, those off-duty guys can hopefully get to the call with an engine or a fire vehicle, and we pull mutual aid for an ambulance. But the other communities are going through the same things. In the last two and a half weeks, we've had three 24-hour shifts in which we had to strike a box for both ambulances in service, six times during the 24 hours. One of them is of note, and I spoke to the chairman briefly about if someone to update him. During that time period, it was 3:00 in the afternoon, both of them were being used. The engine, our main engine, was tied up with a motor vehicle accident, in which there wasn't anybody injured, but the other side of town. The deputy and I were in the same car, because we had to drop off a vehicle for maintenance. The call came in for someone possibly collapsed. The update immediately was CPR in progress by the patient's wife. We were three houses down. He and I were first on scene, took over care, the ambulance was able to free up from the hospital pretty quickly and get in there with us, crews come in off-duty. Long story short, we, we worked in this gentleman who had lengthy, lengthy heart disease for approximately 20 minutes. We were able to get what we call ROSC, return to spontaneous circulation. We've got a pulse back, we got a blood pressure back, transported him, and he was going for follow-up care at South Shore Hospital, and then eventually got transported into Boston Medical Center for further care. The reason why I bring this up was, if you have a cardiac arrest, we need all hands on deck. We need, we need six members, we, we can't do four members, you can't do two members. We're doing as much as we can with less, but we're doing it, and something's going to give at some point. One of the things I want to bring up about that, and I think back to, you know, if anybody's a Patriots fan, 2001, when they won their first Super Bowl, and I remember watching the beginning of the introductions, when they, the Rams come out and Greatest Show on Turf, and they said, you know, on defense is this guy, and the Patriots, and the announcer says, "The New England Patriots want to be introduced as one unit." And I looked at somebody, and I said, "They won already." That's how we do things with our department. We're a team, and every little bit matters, what people contribute. Spoke to my EMS coordinator, he didn't want to be here tonight, he doesn't want to be a standout, he is one of the best you're going to find in Plymouth County, and he's a direct link to our EMS medical director, Dr. Muse over in Brockton Hospital. Through a grant, we've got an ultrasound, portable ultrasound, in which we make an advanced, quick assessment on trauma patients, and whether they need to go to Level 1 or whatever. We're the only one in the county right now doing that. We have something called dual-sequence defibrillation. It's very cutting-edge. We believe on this patient, it was the first time it's been done in Plymouth County. Again, we're doing everything we can. The national average, as of, for 2024, for CPR resuscitations, the national average is 30%, which is a good number. 2024 numbers we had, and it was in double digits as far as patients, we're at 77% success. And we're not including overdoses in which we're able to, if we get there early enough with opiates, we're able to, you know, wake them up quickly, we call it, or someone that's obvious passed away for a while. This is phenomenal, and we're doing this every day. So, I want to just kind of express that out there. Our call volume's not going to get lower. We've got 200 units on some street going in, there's, there's word that there's other places that are going to have 200 more, or whatever, I'm not sure. Our staff does so many things that go under the radar, not in their job description. They're out in the community, you know, to a variety of things. Our fire prevention captain, Chris Carty, is also the fireworks guy that's certified. Our deputy is also a member of the state hazmat team, in which he's a main link for us on anything that comes, comes through. Justin Silva, like I said, my EMS coordinator, he hates to be mentioned, he's very bashful with that, he, he is the guy. And, you know, Dr. Muse will call immediately and say, "Hey, Justin just gave us heads up on this." Dr. Muse was actually on the cell phone with Justin while the other paramedic was on medical control that we go for, for medical orders. That's what a link we have here with our department. To double down on what Chief Barney said, I couldn't be prouder of the guys we have and the people we have in our department. We're working so much closer now with our police department, and we're training, and we're sharing different opportunities back and forth, and we, we speak at least once, twice a week, minimum, on everything that's going on, and it's making for a better situation. Last night, I was in contact with, you know, Chief Barney and the deputy regarding their situation, you know, with their officer. They do the same for us, and it, it's just such a nice, nice way of doing things, but the bottom line is this, for us, as of right now, salary side for us, we're within our budget after two months, but anything can change, and we have the full staff, and we hope we keep people healthy. We're diligent every week, and we do that. On the expense side, we're a little struggling, we're struggling a little bit right now. The biggest issues we're running into is the cost of ambulance supplies, that isn't going down. We're involved with a little bit of an issue with one of the area hospitals in which the fire chiefs are speaking with them, we're calling it Linen Gate, in which they, we bring in patients, and now they want to charge us for, per patient, on the linens that they give us back, that they've given us for the last 70 years. So, we're going to work on that, but that could be a substantial cost to the communities, we're going to fight that, but.
What hospital?
South Shore Hospital. So, they've received a letter, State Representative has already got a letter, we, they've received a letter from the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs, unanimous, not 29 of us, as well as the EMS coordinators, that we want a meeting to sit down. They want to charge us $7 per patient, so we're going to bring someone in, in a regular linen sheet, that, we're going to make the bed for them, which is something some of the paramedics do there, because they're so busy. And then they're going to have a key fob that we have to go and, like, when you go to the, you know, the restroom at the, at the gas station, ask for the key fob, and you plug it in, and then they're going to give you a packet, which will have a disposable sheet, disposable blanket, et cetera, basically made out of glorified paper. That's something in the process, we're working hard on that, and that's, that's unacceptable. So, that's an expense. On the other part of it, the biggest thing is it's difficult to control, and I've talked with the town manager a lot, we've spoken about it, is the vehicle expense. Where we're running into problems with it is the emission stuff on some of the engines, some of the ladders, you know, the ladder truck, the cost of doing the repairs. I, I say it all the time, Marcus Buckley is a miracle worker for the DPW. He's unbelievable, between our two guys and him, they do everything they possibly can, but there's no way to keep up with some of these things. So, like, right now, our Engine 3, which is our second newest engine, that's going to go get repairs down in Plainville, and it's not a non-warranty part, but that's going to be down there for a couple of days. Right now, we're approximately 35% after two months through our vehicle expense budget. We're doing everything we can to keep it going, and we're, we're babying things. That's a concern, and we're going to keep an eye on it. As far as, we talk about, you know, CPR calls and everything, but even the routine calls, and the, and the folks from the police department, they, they see this regular. There is no routine call anymore, none. We go to a certain particular home, we, we tend to know what the history is going on there. We send two people, four people, a lot of times, we're leaning on our brothers and sisters in blue to have, for them to be there, too. I, I think where we were 11 years ago, before we asked, you know, for that grant, and we got the grant for this, to get us up to six, we actually, this is where, where we were, we actually would send, on the second call, a ladder truck with one person in it, whether it be to a fire or anything else. We can't go backwards to those days, we can't, and we're doing everything we can to keep things away from there. So, I guess the biggest thing I can say to you is, is we're really watching the budget closely, we, we back it up every week, concerned about the expense side, but we're going to continue to keep working on that, on the salary end of it, with collective bargaining, training, we're really trying to make sure we, we keep online, because we know what the town's up against, we knew what they were up against last year. And we're hoping that we're going to stay healthy with everything, but, but our people are doing so much with the six members per shift. The biggest concern I have going forward with that is the number of times that our ambulance is being used. And if we take one person away, that second ambulance goes out, and it's a domino effect, then we lose that money coming in, and the biggest thing more than anything is the taxpayers, they're not getting what they need, and we're making a difference. A lot of times, in these cardiac arrests, it's the second ambulance. It could be the second ambulance coming while the first one's at the hospital, or vice versa, and everybody's trained the same way, from the deputy, myself down, so.
If, if I could, could you just hone in on the two ambulances, because last time I looked at the stats, it appeared to me, maybe I'm wrong, that it seemed to be an abundance of calls where, simultaneously, that both ambulances were going out.
Absolutely.
So, I guess the question becomes, from a, from a, from a Manning standpoint, if you had to drop that second ambulance, what does that mean to the community? Because it would seem to me that, on a bulk of your calls, you're getting back-to-back calls, so.
Correct. So, when I, when I, that's a great question, Kevin, thank you. So, when I speak about striking a box for multiple calls with both ambulances in service, that means there's a second ambulance that's needed. If we didn't have that second ambulance, we're hoping for off-duty help to come in, man an engine, or whatever, to go to the scene, hoping we're going to get mutual aid coverage for the second ambulance. Other communities are going through the same things. You could be waiting anywhere from five to 10 minutes for that ambulance, you hope not, but dispatch goes down the road, so depending on where you are in a certain neighborhood, they may say, "Okay, the Rockland Ambulance is the closest." Well, their ambulances might be tied up. So, then you go to the next one over, you go to Holbrook, you go to Whitman, you go to Hanover. The bottom line is advanced life support that we're bringing to our taxpayers is going to be, like, quite a bit delayed.
Okay, that's what I really care.
Yeah, and just, again, I'd also like to point out, too, that this, this shouldn't go unnoticed, besides the fact that, per capita in the state, we're probably one of the busiest fire departments for a community of our size, considering what we do with six members, but the biggest thing is, is, is we just want to get out there to folks, is, we're as efficient as we possibly can be, we absolutely are, and we want to get people there at a moment's notice, and it's making a difference.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you very much.
So, clearly, I think people have to understand, we have two departments here that are clearly already doing a lot more with a lot less, and they're doing it with a lot less than what they need. So, I think people really need to notice what these, what these two departments are doing for us in town, and I think it's imperative that we make sure that the townspeople know that. So, to you and the deputy and your staff, thank you for what you do. Any, anything else for this, or anybody? Next, the DPW, we had to push off till the 22nd. Town manager budget updates to the public?
All right now, the next budget process is just beginning. The current budget is tracking appropriately, as you just heard from the two, two of the larger departments. We're, we're monitoring what's going on over the police department pretty closely, that's probably the one that is going to give us the most hot perm. As far as the, we are starting early and have started meeting with the Finance Committee for the FY '27 budget, and we are requesting that the department heads, at this point, submit a level-funded budget, that is our starting point, which would mean that they're going to have to look at what, what services they may have to cut, or expenses that they may have to cut to be able to work within what they have. There's contractual obligations, both with employees and vendors, that they'll have to take into consideration. So, that being said, the process is just beginning, we expect it to take some, quite a bit of time, and, you know, we are meeting again with the Finance Committee, starting early, and setting up after tonight, the Fiscal Advisory Committee that will help us along with that task.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
In light of that, I think we spoke about this before, now that summer's over, I think we're at it again, and I just want to repeat what I said previously back in the spring. Coming into the FY '27 year, if, looking at what the revenues were, and what we project that they may be, because the state revenues don't seem to be increasing at all, so if we look at the local aid kind of projecting forward, we're still looking at it a level-funded, roughly, last I lived, about $1.7 million shortfall. That's an estimate, and obviously, this process changes as it goes along. The question we, the board had, at the request of the Finance Committee, extended town meeting to May 4. It's wholly apparent to me, at this stage of the game, that once the governor files for a budget in January, we'll know definitively what the revenue figures will be, and then we can extrapolate those numbers and see where it lands. So, in January, we should have a clearer idea of what the impact will be. Sitting here, having done this for many, many years, and having been through, you know, override situations, I've said in the past, and I'm going to say again, that it would appear to me that we may be in a position that we would have to have a question of an override election, and that's the people's decision. I said previously, and I want to advocate going forward, that in my opinion, it should be department by department, because it's the people's money. They should have the right to determine how they want it to be spent. A person on a fixed income, such as myself, you know, may feel as though they want to vote for increases in a certain department, but don't have the wherewithal to do it for the entire department. I do not think one size fits all, I think it, it, it's not, in my opinion, the way democracy, you know, should work. I think going, as we prepare going forward for town meeting, again, I'm going to be advocating that we have the budgets, once we know the numbers, of what we can afford versus what would be contingent on an override, and ask the people if they voted that way. Now, people can come to town meeting and determine, "Listen, I don't want an override," and you vote, and there'll be no, you know, override. But that's the people's right to go there. In concert with that, I think we're going to be in the position that if we do have an election, I think it should be two weeks after the, the annual town meeting. So, but by the end of March, this board, and statutorily, and we've asked counsel this opinion, it's only the selectmen that get to put the question on the ballot and determine how it will. how it will, how the ballot will be structured. That being said, we're going to need to know, uh, pretty quickly, once the process starts to gel, if there is going to be an override, what those questions would be. Now, for people out there that are going to say, well, you're advocating for an override. No, I'm advocating for the fact that the people have a right to decide how they want to spend their money. If you don't like that, you, that's, you come to town meeting and voice your concerns and, uh, at that point, the people on the ballot, the wider population, then has the opportunity to vote out what they deem fitting and proper and what they feel as though, how they want the town to look. We can only set the table. It's up to the people to make the determination as to how they, uh, how they wish to spend their money. So going into this, it's going to be a tough year. It's no big surprise. We've been saying this now for the last year and a half, actually. Uh, only the process is beginning and, um, you know, unless we get manna from heaven, I, I, I see it, it's probably going to be a tough year. But I, I am firm in my convictions that I think it should be department by department and at the appropriate time, I'll be making those motions down the line. But I think from a policy standpoint, we have to understand that we have to give the people the widest possible option, um, as to what they want to decide. That's just my two cents.
Anybody have anything else on that?
No, I'm totally agreeing.
I agree also. You all set with the budget?
Yep.
Uh, next, we're going to have the treasurer up, and while she's coming up, I want to make a motion, I have a motion made to appoint two people to the fiscal advisory committee.
Uh, motion to appoint Peter Walters and Sarah Poole to the fiscal advisory committee.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, so we're discussing the reconciliation process and where we stand. Um, so as of today, there are a hundred and five bank accounts, a hundred and five cash accounts that are being balanced. Um, all but two accounts are balanced through June thirtieth. Those two accounts remaining are vendor and payroll. We do not currently balance those in-house. Those are balanced by Rockland Trust. So, um, there was the beginning of the year when we transferred over to a different payroll company, the reporting was off from one company to another. Um, so there is still tying those out, but I would expect that any day now to be those through June thirtieth. Um, July, um, is also, all revenue has been submitted for July, so all that, but about a fifty thousand dollar grant has been submitted. Um, so as you could see on the last report that, um, the finance director sent out, with sixteen percent way through the year and twenty-five percent has been already collected and posted. Um, so that's really great. We're, we're working our tails off down there to get that done. So there is, some of the adjustments are still being in the process of being submitted and many already have. So as those processes are being, um, submitted and posted, I'm continuously updating cash, mostly every day. Um, so I would expect that to be done hopefully by the end of the month, if not the beginning of the next month. Um, as far as accounts receivable is concerned, pretty much the same thing. Um, there was a discrepancy from several years back with an auction. Um, I have found all discrepancies and we have done, I have probably got over a hundred journal entries at this point. So myself and the assistant town accountant have been in the process of going back and forth and getting those posted as well. Um, and that's just about to be closed. Um, as far as the healthcare trust, there's not too much with the healthcare trust. It's pretty, it's invoiced, um, you know, it's money incoming out and, um, it, the invoices are paid through the general fund, so we're not really touching that. Um, but that's pretty much it as far as the reconciliation is concerned.
Okay. Just so I understand, so the close, the close of books for June thirtieth, if I'm, correct me if I'm.
Yes, of course.
Wrong in what I say. So the reconciliation has been completed through the close of books on June thirtieth?
The, the discrepancies have been found. So I have balanced my books to zero. Those adjustments are still being processed through accounting.
Okay.
So whether it be interest that was missed, um, or a turnover that wasn't, um, didn't come through our office, I have found all discrepancies. Um, so it's a matter of collecting those discrepancies, entering into the system and then posting them to accounting, and then coming back to my side to update cash.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, so Schedule A should be able to begin, to be worked on. If, if the books are closed. Schedule A should be able to be given the process of being worked on in turn to get free cash certified. Cause my concern is that if we don't, if we wait, in, you know, and Schedule A is a bear, I.
Yes, of course.
readily admit that. Um, we have to get that so that free cash is certified, so when we get to the budget process, we know what we're dealing with. It's going to be paramount from a budget standing, planning process that we know what free cash is. If we've got a one point seven million dollar shortfall walking into this, and that may grow depending on what the fixed costs are, last year we had roughly four point three million in free cash. There's no way we're going to achieve that number. So we're looking to make sure, and I want to ensure that the timeliness of this is enough that, uh, the, the books are closed, the reconciliation is completed, Schedule A is worked on and free cash is submitted. And I know some of that is not your job.
Correct, yes.
To the accountant, but, but that's my concern.
Of course.
That's what I want to make sure that we hone right in on.
And last year, when I knew we were experiencing, um, what I did was I implemented a pre-cash process. Um, so this is kind of a cycle that goes through our department. And before it comes to me for reconciliation, I, my assistant treasurer collector, I implemented a cash process where she could essentially find those discrepancies much faster, collect that data. So what I'm getting, I'm not bogged down with, um, you know, finding these, um, different discrepancies. So it's a much faster process now.
Okay. I, if you could, I would like to be, I'm sure, at least me, uh, updated in terms of the process and the timeliness.
Of course.
Where we stand and where we stand with Schedule A too.
Okay.
Okay.
Of course. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Uh, next, oh, I see that our favorite town clerk is here. Would she like to come to the podium?
Yay!
Come on, come on up and say hello.
She doesn't want to, that's all.
Hello.
So I mentioned earlier that the election is on November fifteenth. Hours are eight to four and the deadline for nomination papers is September twenty-ninth. Was I correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's it?
I can handle that.
Okay. See, it was easy.
Thank you.
All right. Good to see you.
You too.
Um, the Abington High School boosters are holding a door-to-door drive on October nineteenth. Can I get a vote from the board?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Uh, next, I'm going to hand this right over to you, Scott, for the grant.
Uh, yes, sir. Requesting that you vote, um, to approve us being part of this grant, the, um, SAPAG Safe Grant is, um, that it allows combined services. This one is being hosted by the city of Brockton. It includes Brockton, Avon, Whitman, Stodden and Abington. And specifically, it will provide us with, um, resources for the health department. It will give us some backup on public health nurse, um, health inspections and things of this, like that. It's, uh, five hundred and something thousand dollars. It'll be controlled by the city of Brockton.
So this doesn't require us to hire anybody?
This does not require us to hire anybody, yeah.
Any questions by the board?
Uh, it just, and I'm sure it's going to fit into your restructuring recommendations.
It actually fits in with the, uh, policy of this board and the restructuring very well. Yes.
I'll move, we approve the grant application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote unanimous. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the appointment of a registrar of voters. Uh, we already did the fiscal advisory committee. Um, we have an application from Katie Comas, motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is unanimous. Uh, number eight, uh, vote to put land into conservation. I'm going to kick this to Paul.
Uh, so a couple of weeks ago, I got an email from a resident on Harris Court. If you, once I finish speaking, you get up to the podium. You can fill whatever I missed. Uh, there was one part of the email was a complaint, uh, that got bumped over to conservation. I don't know where it stands there. And then the other part was, although there's three parcels of town-owned land, uh, behind Vineyard Road, Harris Court, and at a butts, uh, the property's on Bedford Street and the Wamiftown line. Uh, three years ago, we put in a budding property into conservation. Um, so the, the, I got a couple of residents asked if we could put three, the other three parcels into, uh, care of conservation.
So these parcels bump into those, right?
Yeah.
So it makes sense to do.
So like three years ago, I think the land you donated was part of that whole SWAT that we put into conservation. Um, a lot of those weren't even really wetlands. This is like probably ninety to ninety-five percent wetlands.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So that's your motion.
Uh, so my motion, well, you want to get up and?
Well, I think you've articulated it enough for me.
Yeah. All right. So I guess my motion would be to put, uh, parcel sixty-four fourteen, sixty-four thirty-four and sixty-eight two, uh, into the care of conservation.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimous. If, do you want?
Thank you.
There you go.
You can go to conservation tomorrow. They're going to do the same thing.
Yes.
I think.
Uh, number nine is request for permission from seven-eleven at one forty-five North Quincy Street to stay open twenty-four seven.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I am not in favor of this. I, uh, for a twenty-four hour, I would move, we deny the application.
I'm also of the same opinion. Is somebody going to make a motion to that effect? I don't see. Is anybody here for that? Nope. Uh, motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote is unanimous. Number ten, approval of the July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Number eleven is town manager report on recommendations as to restructuring departments at town hall.
So I gave you all, uh, a copy of the report to give you, I guess, the, um, Reader's Digest version. I met with all of the town hall department heads and I asked them, um, start off with the questionnaire, uh, miss, ask questions on what their, uh, full-time employee count was pre-COVID, what the, uh, current full-time employee count was or is, um, list their core services and the essential services, if they had any outsourcing opportunities that they were aware of or currently, um, using or, or taking, availing themselves of what the pros and cons of those services would be. And we asked about, um, what a reduction in, um, in staffing would be as well. Um, once this was, and this was used, is going to be used for dual purposes, um, we also, um, will plan to use this as we go forward to, uh, push some information out to the public on what, um, each department actually, how it's staffed, what the, um, responsibilities of the department are and what if, um, when we go into FY twenty-seven, if there are cuts, what the effects on the, uh, of those cuts will be on the community. Um, after meeting with the department heads, one thing that we really, uh, we realized is that, you know, they are, most of the departments here were running fairly lean. There weren't very many changes that we haven't already addressed as far as staffing with, uh, uh, between, um, pre-COVID and current staffing. One of the, uh, things that we found that most of the departments are leveraging outsourcing in one capacity or another, uh, areas that we have used that in the past, it has, um, and where it is effective, uh, we continue to use it, um, to outright replace a department at this time, um, with total outsourcing doesn't seem, uh, to make much sense. It's either going to cost, going to cost more for most of the services. We lose the, uh, sort of intimate knowledge of those things, um, and we lose control over, um, or some sense of control over the, um, actual work that's being done. Uh, some examples of this that we found in the assessing department particularly, uh, they, um, did have, um, outsourcing of, um, building assessing and property assessing. And we found that they were using people that were not familiar with the town, not familiar with the properties. They were making a lot of mistakes and then we were going to, we were forced to, uh, fix those mistakes, re-inspect the properties and it forced them into, also into abatement situations. That particular department, um, we had a part-time position that we, um, turned into a full-time position and reduced the amount of outsourcing and it had some very good results on, um, for the town. Other areas, um, and, and most notably, I think where you'll see that my biggest recommendations for changes and changes that have already happened, uh, obviously with the, um, health department, uh, with the recent resignation of our public health nurse and, um, our assistant health inspector, by signing this agreement with Brockton, we actually can fulfill some of those duties that were performed by those, um, individuals that were in those positions and therefore, um, no need to actually refill those positions. We do have a health agent that I, I would recommend that we continue, um, on with the health agent, but put him under, um, the Department of Inspection Services as an additional inspector who can deal with the, um, there are quite a few things that happen in the health department that have, do have to be dealt with, um, as far as food inspections, uh, which is by the way, another one of the areas that we are outsourcing now. So the primary, uh, food inspections for all of our restaurant establishments are done by an outside agency and that has worked out very well. When there is a problem, um, then the town health inspector will follow up on it. Tattoo parlors all have to be, um, inspected. We have seven of those in town right now. Uh, we do get called out for hoarding houses or for, um, illegal occupant houses that the Board of Health has to be involved in also. So at this point, that would be, uh, my biggest recommendation. We have also eliminated a position in my department, um, that turned into a very good outsourcing opportunity as far as, um, website management, webpage management and social media, um, management and getting, um, information out. We now get a, a quarterly newsletter that's done, uh, that we've been doing for a while. So, um, that's another position that I would not recommend that we refill. And then lastly, you'll see within the report, we do have some departments, um, particularly the, uh, treasurer collectors department that also handles payroll and many other functions. Within that, um, we're looking for expanded services with the payroll company, with Harvest Payroll, that will actually reduce the amount of, uh, some of the workload that's handled by current staff members there to free them up to actually handle, um, the folks that do still, and quite a few folks that like to still come to the counter to pay their bills and use the drive-through. And I think as time goes on with that particular department, um, there is a possibility that there is going to be a, um, uh, retirement in the near future. And I think once that happens, we probably, I would, I think we'd be in a position where we wouldn't refill that position. Now, some of these other things that are, you know, I think that we haven't gotten into into the report, that will be more of a, um, uh, sort of a secondary part of this report as we get into FY twenty-seven, are what the, um, if, what other, you know, force reductions will mean to the public. And, um, so beyond, beyond that, what we did, again, we worked and focused pretty much on town hall. I found it to be a very good, um, and I think most of the department heads found it to be a very good, um, uh, activity for us to look into. I would suggest that we start it even with the, uh, police, fire, DPW, um, library and senior center next.
Good. If I could, um, so, thank you. I think this is exactly from a standpoint, what we spoke about this before and what our actual vote was to begin a town hall, scrub each department to make a determination and clearly, you know, it, it appears, so the, the basis of the recommendations, from what I'm gathering, just looking at this quickly, is that the health department, the positions that have been vacated, um, are now not going to be filled and that that positions will now transition into underneath the inspectional services department.
Correct.
And in doing so, we're moving forward now, having completed this exercise, to continue now to spread it out townwide. And I think it's important when we talk again about the budget and the reason we did this before, last six months ago, when, when we did it, was to do just that, to be able to to say to the people, we've gone through every department, we've made the cuts where necessary or not fill the positions. And further to that, I would say, and I had just conversations with you before the meeting, that any, that as I understand it, you've already put a freeze on, correct?
Correct.
And that any, any department that, that is considered perhaps essential, if there's a vacancy, they're going to have to come up and make a case as to why it needs to be filled and do the demographics and the statistics, so we get a clear handle on it. So walking into FY27, we know, we've already done this exercise, so when it gets to town meeting flow, we can say, folks, we've, we've done this. We've been working on it. We've made the cuts. We've streamlined, and when necessary, if there was a vacancy, if we had to fill it, it was because it was essential. And I guess that's sort of where I think we should be, only because, again, having been through this before, it's not a pleasant task, and again, it's the people's money. We have to show them that we're being very mindful of what we're doing and, and so moving forward. So that's the first step, which I appreciate. And, you know, when do you think you'll have the rest of it completed?
I would say probably another month.
Okay, good. So we can look forward at the?
Probably the end of October meeting.
Yeah, the, the last meeting. Well, we only have one meeting left.
One thing with this, I just got this tonight.
Yeah, well, I did, I said I didn't.
So I've already looked at some things that I don't agree with in here. So my suggestion is that we digest this, and this is again on the next meeting agenda. Because we can't, we can't be handed this at five minutes before the meeting and expect to do it, because I see things in there that I don't agree with. So I want, I would like the board to make a motion to put this on the next agenda, and then all of us can review it, because it's not a one-page document.
Right.
And then we can all send our recommendations or our comments or concerns to the town manager and talk about it at the next meeting. It's a great report. I appreciate you've done what we asked, but I don't agree with all of the recommendations in there. So.
Okay.
And I want time to digest it and, and agree or disagree with his position on his recommendation. That's all.
Yeah, that's right.
So. But I appreciate you doing what we asked you, and you did, and you put it together, and it's extensive, and I want some time to digest it. I'll accept a motion to put this on the next meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, and I'd like everybody, if you have comments, concerns, questions, whatever suggestions, to send them all to the town manager by email a week before the next meeting, so he has a chance, with ample opportunity, to review them.
Yep.
So this is the start. And my quick breeze, and I'm, you know, not the brightest bulb, there's not enough going on in here that we have to do. That's my opinion. And I know I'm only one of four, soon to be one of five, but that's my two cents worth at 6:10 PM.
All right.
Anything else?
Uh, no, just a reminder before we adjourn that the 9/11 ceremony, as the chairman indicated at the beginning of the meeting, is this Thursday, 8:30 AM sharp at the town hall, because construction's ongoing at the 9/11 memorial in and around it. Please, if you're available, please show up. It was 24 years ago. A lot of us remember it clearly, and we want to pause to give remembrance for all those who passed away on that tragic day. So Thursday, this coming Thursday, 8:30 AM in front of town hall.
Am I saying that the clerk wants to get up to say something? No, I'm sorry, there must be somebody else. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.